Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regularly scheduled city council meeting for September 28th, 2020. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we'll start by doing the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So tonight, we have two presentations, and our first presentation, I'm sorry, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
Approve Huntington.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Any discussion? During non-administrative, if you'd be kind enough to do the roll call for the approval of tonight's agenda.
Yes, sir. Call Councilmember Fabiles.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby.
Aye.
Councilmember Krogman.
Aye.
Councilmember Slater.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Haig.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We have two presentations tonight. The first presentation is for Alpha, our Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities presentation. And tonight, we have Mr. Scott McMahon from CGMC to do our presentation. Welcome, Mr. McMahon.
Mayor Haig, it appears that Scott, Scott is still having some technical difficulties maybe with his microphone. I would suggest maybe moving on to item four B, the certificate of appreciation for Diane Penny. And then we'll come back.
We can do that.
And see what's he has availability. Otherwise, we may have to reschedule that CGMC presentation.
Do you have the ability to reach out via text or phone call to see if you can maybe work this out on his end?
Yeah, I will. I have been trying, so we'll go from there.
This is Councilmember Krogman.
Okay, so.
You could also use the phone.
It's a good point. While we're waiting for our city administrator to hook up with CGMC, Mr. McMahon, we'll move on to four Bravo. And then we'll come back to four Alpha when it's convenient. So the next item on our agenda for presentations is for Bravo, Diane Penny's certificate of appreciation. And I think it goes without saying that for all the years that Ms. Penny has dedicated to the city of La Sure and to our library system, I think we're all extremely grateful for her years of service and for all the work that she's done for the city of La Sure and for our residents having one of the finest libraries in the area. So on behalf of the entire city council, and I'll give each of our council members an opportunity to publicly acknowledge that. But on behalf of our entire council, we'd like to say fair winds and following seas, Diane, and thank you so much for all your hard work and all your years of service to the city of La Sure. And if we could properly start with Councilmember Fabiles, we'll just keep going through the alphabet. Councilmember Fabiles, anything to say?
Yes, I want to say thank you very much for all of your your service to the town through the through the library. And my daughter, Elisia, has a special thank you too for the amount of time that she has spent there and that you have worked with her. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Fabiles. Councilmember Huntington?
I'd say thank you well to Diane for her service here. I've been in this town for 23 years and four children go through the school system and go through the library. And thank you, Diane, for everything you did there, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. Councilmember Kirby?
Diane, Sean Kirby, I want to thank you also. My grandkids especially love your live reading book programs you do when you read online, and they they come to visit and they always want to watch that. So thank you. They they found that very interesting and entertaining. So I want to wish you well and good luck with everything.
Thank you, Councilmember Kirby. Councilmember Slater?
Congratulations on your retirement, Diane. Personally, I'd like to thank you for everything you've done for me over the past few years and everything you've done for two of my grandchildren. They're gonna miss you.
Thank you, Councilmember Slater. Councilmember Sullivan?
Just want to say thanks, Diane, for your years of service here in La Sure. I remember coming down to the library as a kid and seeing you down there and just appreciate everything you've done for our town. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Krogman, I didn't forget about you, sir.
Thank you. Diane, thanks so much. You know, it's not just children. They certainly benefited from all of your your work and your care for them, but also the adults of the community. So you've made our community a much better place. We're gonna miss you, but I think you've left a legacy. And hopefully, things will continue at the pace that you've kept them because you've made it the best library in the system, no question in my mind. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Krogman. And Diane, we'd all wish we could shake your hand, but unfortunately, under these times, we're all separated, as you know. But with that said, I think we're all gonna do a round of applause to you. So everybody. Congratulations, Diane, and thank you again. Now move on to our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered to have been made available to the city council these two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. On tonight's consent agenda, we have five items. We have our city council meeting minutes for September 14th, 2020. We have our disbursement approvals through September 28th, 2020. We have our backup building inspector services agreement with the city of Belle Plaine. We have our infants remembered in silence iris proclamation, and we have the plat extension request for common bond, La Sure Two. Anybody have any issues with our tonight's consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Krogman. There was a minor correction needed for the minutes. Has that been made? There was a typo in one of the dates.
Mayor Haig, members of the council, that has been, that has been adjusted. It was just an extra number, I think, in the year 2020 for the resolution number. So that has been, that has been updated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Administrator Krugel. Thank you, Councilmember Krogman, for pointing that out. Does anybody else have any issues with tonight's consent agenda? During that, I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Councilmember Krogman, so move.
Sullivan, second. Councilmember Krog. Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Any final discussion on our consent agenda? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to go ahead and take the roll call vote for our consent agenda for tonight?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fabiles?
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby?
Aye.
Councilmember Krogman?
Aye.
Councilmember Slater?
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Aye.
And Mayor Haig?
Aye.
Mayor Haig, if I may, I believe Scott, Scott may have his audio available. Scott, if, are you able to unmute yourself to be able to speak?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Perfect.
Mr. McMahon, welcome. Nice to have you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here, at least virtually. I wish I was down there visiting you guys in person, but given things, I'm glad we were able to make this work.
Exactly.
So, everybody, this is this is Administrator Krugel. Scott, do you have a presentation? Did you want me to give you control so that you're a presenter and can show your screen?
Jasper, that'd be great. All right. Do you have it loading the system or do I need to show my screen?
I don't, I don't believe I, I, if you sent your PowerPoint, I don't know if I had time to get it in there, but I have made you a presenter, so you can share your screen now.
If you give me a moment here, I will get it pulled up.
All right, no problem.
All right, can you guys see that okay now?
Yes, sir.
Yes, perfect. So thank you for the opportunity here. My name is Scott McMahon. I'm with Flirting Hood here on.
Go ahead, Mr. McMahon. I see it.
Okay. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. So my name is Scott McMahon. I'm here on behalf of Flirting Hood, representing our client, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. Just wanted to give you all a quick update and rundown of what's been happening in the Capitol through the legislative session. Now for special sessions, anticipated more special sessions, and an outlook into the 2021 legislative session. So first of all, just as a quick reminder as to who we are, we are, and I just lost my visual, my PowerPoint here real quick. So there we go. So we represent 102 cities across Greater Minnesota. We work on everything that you want us to, ranging from LG and property tax issues to economic development, annexation, transportation, environment and energy, labor employment. Basically, whatever our board and all our members want us to work on on your behalf, we will gladly do it. So looking at this past legislative session, we walked into it back in January, anticipating a short session under the impression that we had a $1.5 billion budget surplus and that the majority of the session would be focused on a bonding bill. In reality, we ended up after March 16th with no in-person legislative meetings. We've had four special sessions. Our surplus became a $2.4 billion deficit. We've had a battle over the apportionment of the CARES Act funding. We had special sessions that got focused on civil unrest and policing reforms. We've had battles over Governor Walz's emergency orders, and we have a bonding bill that is still tied up in uncertainty. So our last day of normalness around the Capitol was on March 11th, when we had our Legislative Action Day. And I believe some of you were able to come up for that one. We had a great day with folks meeting legislators. That was on Wednesday. That following Monday is when everything shut down around the Capitol. Pre-COVID, we had a very strong focus on on a focus on a bonding bill of at least $1.5 billion. On local government aid, we're proposing legislation that would put inflation and population growth into an automatic inflator into the LGA formula. We're hoping to build on our 2019 childcare progress, and we are working on a strategy dealing with the PFAS chemical issue that we're having a lot in our groundwater across the state. After COVID, we have still continued focusing on a large bonding bill. We know that it's one of the best ways that the state has to stimulate the economy and get things going forward. We spent a considerable amount of time working on the CARES Act to make sure that the dollars were distributed in a way that were equitable and addressed the needs across all of Minnesota. We know that we have new and exacerbated childcare challenges that have been caused by the the COVID shutdowns and a number of providers leaving the marketplace. We also worked to get some small grants, or small business grants out to our communities, recognizing that a lot of our Main Street retail businesses during the shutdowns were taking a large brunt of of the economic impact. And then obviously, we're working proactively to protect LGA. We also proposed some strategies to help our cities navigate the the COVID pandemic. We created a resource page for all of you to use. We hosted four labor and employment webinars to help our cities figure out what the labor needs were and how to navigate some of those challenges. We had a number of emails on topics such as personnel issues, work by safety, state shutdown. We hosted a webinar on the state budget. We surveyed all of our city leaders to gauge their top concerns. We increased production of our newsletter, and we hosted a Zoom with the governor so that you all could get your questions answered by by the governor as to where things were headed. So one of the biggest things we've worked on this session was ultimately the CARES Act. As all of you probably know, the CARES Act was the federal bill that provided relief funds to states and local governments to mitigate the impact of the COVID-19 outbreak. Kind of looking at the timeline of things, Congress passed the CARES Act in late March. In early April, Minnesota discovered or was informed that we had about $1.8 billion coming to the state through the CARES Act funds. Later in April, we got very vague guidance from the federal government as to how these dollars should be used, which led to a lot of confusion on the local side as to what expenses could be allocated to the funds, how much money people would be getting, and so on and so forth. In April and May, we worked through the end of the regular session with a number of other local government groups to work with the Department of Revenue, the legislature, and the governor to figure out a formula that would equitably treat the various levels of local government from counties and cities from metro to Greater Minnesota, with the funds that were available, knowing the costs and the expenses that our communities had. Unfortunately, we ended the special, we ended the regular session without an agreement as to how those dollars were going to be allocated. In June, we had our first special session that was triggered by the governor's extension, the emergency order. We continued working with those same groups to try and get agreement of the legislature to to move something forward. Unfortunately, the legislature was not able to come to an agreement as to which formula to use. And a lot of that was driven by the fact that the governor was not signing off on the position that the Senate had with regards to how they wanted to see those dollars come out. Fast forward about a week later, and the governor approved the distribution of the funds through emergency or through executive order that looked pretty close to what the final negotiation point was with the legislature. So looking at the different CARES Act distributions that were under consideration, here's what it should have been for La Sure under the four different models. On the left-hand side, $202,000 is what the House was proposing. $356,000 is what the Senate was proposing back during the regular session. In the June special session, the proposal of the House and Senate came mostly to an agreement on, but didn't pass the bill on, would have given La Sure the $308,000, and that's what the governor ultimately pushed out. So I hope that that number reflects what La Sure actually has received from the state for where your CARES Act allocation. If you have additional questions on the CARES Act, some great resources are in the Minnesota Department of Revenue, the US Treasury, and then the League of Minnesota Cities has a great FAQ on their website for your use as well. So looking at the bonding bill, which had been our our top priority from day one, and continues to be our top priority. At the start of session, we were calling for a $1.5 billion bill that would include at least $200 million for wastewater and water infrastructure, $20 million for the Greater Minnesota Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant Program, BDPI, as we all call it, $20 million for childcare facilities grants, $10 million for public infrastructure to support housing, and $200 million for local roads and bridges. The reality is, as important as $1.5 billion bonding bill was back in January, at least the $1.5 billion bonding bill is needed today, given where our economy stands with the COVID pandemic. So kind of looking at where things ended up, back in the fall was when we started talking about a $1.5 billion bonding bill. We wandered through session. We're making progress as committee deadlines were coming through March. And then the wheels kind of came into play as, as the pandemic wandered through. We were not able to get an agreement on a bonding bill before the end of the special, or before the end of the legislative session in May. In June, the legislature came back for the first special session, and they were not able to to get a bonding bill done for a couple of different reasons. A lot of it dealing with the conflict between the governor and Republicans as to the use of the governor's executive orders in dealing with the with the COVID pandemic. In July, they came back to the special session, but they still couldn't get the bonding bill done. Unfortunately, the August and September bonded or special sessions, they could not deal with the bonding bill because the state was selling pre-approved bonds, and based off of regulations, we couldn't change our balance sheets for 30 days leading up to the sale and 30 days after the sale. So the legislature during both the August, August and September special sessions could not act on the bonding bill. They will have another bond or another special session coming up in October, and we really hope that they finally are able to find a way to get the bonding bill done at that point. We are past that blackout period, and so the governor could call a special session any day if they do come to agreement on on how they can get a bonding bill through. And I think ahead on all those points here. If for some reason we don't get a bonding bill done in calendar 2020, it will be our number one priority moving into the next legislative session. The other big issue we had going into session were dealing with the PFAS chemicals in our water systems. For those of you that don't know about these, these are pervasive forever chemicals linked to health concerns, and they're found in water bodies across the state. We do know the removal from drinking water is expensive, and removal from wastewater is not technologically feasible. Our solution to deal with this issue is to find ways to deal with municipal source reduction. We partner with the league on a three-pronged approach to this. We wanted to find ways to identify the main sources of PFAS in our wastewater, identify sources for reduction strategies, and how to educate wastewater professionals in public ways to prevent PFAS from entering into the waste stream. We were seeking $500,000 for this initiative. Unfortunately, as the pandemic came through, it basically killed any spending bills that were moving forward, including this one. We do intend to have this be a top priority for the 2021 legislative session. Our other primary issue this session was our childcare initiative. This year, we're asking for $10 million to expand the childcare grants and $4 million for additional funding to the six initiative foundations. Early in session, as we had this $1.5 billion projected surplus, the House DFL announced a $500 million investment for early childhood and childcare, and all of our priorities were included with that. And then COVID happened. And so we, although our proposals didn't go forward, there were some things that happened in childcare that have been helpful. We had a state allocation of $40 million out of the CARES Fund to help prop up the childcare industry. Providers in Greater Minnesota received 53% of those funds. In the first special session, they allocated $85 million to expand the rates for the childcare assistance program using federal funds that were available for that. And then in July, the governor issued an additional $60 million in emergency funds for childcare providers. So we've had a total of $100 million go out to help support our providers. The reality is, we knew going into this legislative session, we were short 40,000 childcare slots across Greater Minnesota, and we anticipate that number to have grown as a result of the COVID pandemic. So looking ahead, in February, we had a $1.5 billion surplus. In May, we had a projected $2.4 billion deficit. In July, the state announced updated revenue estimates for the upcoming biennium. And at that point, they were showing a likely $4.7 billion deficit for the biennium that'll be funded next legislative session. And then come November, we'll get the the official update and the official state forecast to see how the 2022, 23 fiscal years are looking. So dealing with with the state budget, you know, as you all have on, and dealing with local budgets, we basically have three options that we can deal with. The first one is we can start to reduce spending during the special sessions. Any money that we don't spend this biennium helps reduce the deficit we're gonna have next biennium. We can also deal with it during next session when we are setting the budget for the 2022, 23 fiscal years. And then, as you all recall, the governor does have his ability to un allot spending. And so those are the three tools that we're gonna have to use in some way to to deal with the budget deficit. Please note that we have an absolute commitment to make sure that LGA is paid on time and that fully funding the LGA program continues to be our number one priority moving forward. So looking at LGA, this year, La Sure's allocation should have been about $1.02 million. For 2021, you should see a slight increase in that amount. That was dealing with the with the LGA bill that was passed two sessions ago. We knew that we were gonna have a little bit of a bump in the second year. And so going forward, assuming things stay stable in the LGA appropriation as we go through the budget deficit, the $1.04 million should be around what you should anticipate going forward. However, the reality is with a $4.7 billion budget surplus, we need to anticipate that that all spending areas are going to be under consideration for budget reductions. So looking ahead to 2021, we have an election coming up in 38 or 39 days. This will shift the power dynamics on the Capitol. Right now, all 201 legislators are up for reelection. The House will likely remain under control, the Democrats. The Senate, it's probably a 50/50 coin toss right now as to if it's the Democrats or Republicans that control that control the Senate moving forward. The pandemic will continue to impact the legislative process. We anticipate things to continue to be virtual rather than in person. Again, protecting LGA will be our top priority. We'll have a strong push on the bonding bill if it doesn't get done this calendar year. But please note that the groundwork for a successful 2021 has already begun. We do have some upcoming events. We have our virtual Fall Conference coming up in November. We have our Legislative Action Day in January. We hope that that's going to be in person, but it's not looking very likely. And so if we need to do something virtual, we will. And then next July, we'll be in Red Wing for our annual Summer Conference. Again, different resources for how you can keep in touch with what we're up to. And I'm happy to take any questions that any of you may have on any of the topics I covered or any additional topics that are top of mind for you.
Members of the council, anybody have any questions for Mr. McMahon? While we're waiting for our other council members to respond, Mr. McMahon, the question I have is that, to quote Bert Blyleven, if my California math is somewhat accurate here, there's about $900 million that has not been allocated of the CARES money. Is that a true statement? And if so, what do they plan on doing with that 900 million? Is it gonna be coming out to the cities?
There are, and I can't tell you exactly for sure what the number is. Unfortunately, the CARES Act is not something that I spend most of my time working on. We've readily handled most of the CARES Act work in the firm. As I, what my understanding is, is they've held money back in recognition that we don't know for sure what the expenses are going to be in recognition that we don't know for sure what DC is going to do in the coming months. We have until the end of November or into December to spend the money. And so there's a possibility for more allocation to come through. One of the challenges that we do have with the CARES Act money is it's not, there are only certain expenses that can be used for. And so we have cities who have money that they don't have expenses that they that qualify for it. And so they have a surplus. We have cities who have had more expenses than what they have been allocated. And so we're trying to figure those things out. But, you know, there are just lots of things still kind of up in the air as to where those things are are gonna be headed.
Thank you. Anybody else from council? Well, on behalf of the entire city council, Mr. McMahon, thank you so much for giving us our presentation on the CGMC and the current state of affairs. And you're welcome to come back to La Sure anytime. It's always a pleasure to have representation from CGMC. Thank you, sir.
We will have, we're happy to do that. And as much as you appreciate us coming down here, at least virtually, know that we appreciate your engagement and participation in CGMC even more. So thank you all for all you do with us and all you do for the city.
Thank you. You have a great evening, sir. Thank you.
You do the same.
Thank you. Okay, well, now move on to our public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign up in advance of the meeting on the sheet provided. Identify themselves by providing a name and address. I understand we have at least one person for our public comment. Is that correct there, Administrator Krugel?
Yes, sir. I have, Jack Roberts had reached out prior to the meeting. He would like to speak. Jack, I can unmute you now. So I'll unmute you, and then you can you can enter the public comment realm.
Can you hear me?
Good evening, Mr. Rock. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Haig. I would like to comment on a recent news article describing a financial error committed by the city. On September 1st, On September 1st, La Sura County News published an article online describing the city's failure to pay several yearly installments into the Highway 169 Tax Abatement Fund. And according to the article, the commitment went, quote, unnoticed by the city. And it does not state how many years this sat unnoticed, but we now face the prospect of making up the half a million dollar shortage in six years. And according to the article, our city finance director laid the blame on, quote, "a combination of management turnover and inadequate documentation." And to me, neither of these reasons is an acceptable explanation. Because by nature, a government of elected and appointed city officials has a predictable amount and timing of turnover. And city staff also experiences turnover. And the fact that procedures to document a major long-term commitment of city tax dollars do not exist, coupled with the fact that outgoing city officials and staff fail to inform their successors about this commitment speaks to some serious negligence. It's a serious error, half a million dollars, one that will have ramifications for our allocation of our tax dollars for many years. If this type of negligence had occurred in the private sector, employees could be fired and third parties could be professionally liable for it. Yet the city employee or a third party hired by the city was accountable for ensuring the fund payments were made, the city needs to take appropriate action, either administratively or legally. And if no one was accountable, then the city needs to quickly address what appears to be a gaping hole in its procedures. Either way, a serious oversight occurred and the city needs to find out who or what in the city's procedures needs to be changed. Additionally, the city council should strongly consider hiring an independent auditor to determine if similar financial and taxation issues like this exist. Finally, I believe that the city needs to explain to all of its residents without being filtered through the press what happened, the consequences of this oversight, and what the city will do moving forward to prevent something like this from happening again. Thank you. And that was, that's all for my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Administrator Krugel, was there anybody else that wished to address council for public comment?
Mayor Hague, I believe if anybody is interested, please raise your hand. We have a few people in attendance right now. And if you, and if you are here for the public hearing on the TIF, please, we'll, we'll take those comments at that time. But I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand at this moment.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion and to go ahead and close public comment.
I'll second Mr. Sullivan's motion.
Thank you. We had a motion by Councilmember Sullivan and a second by Councilmember Krugel. Is there any discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to go ahead and do the roll call to close public comments.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas. Councilmember Huntington. Councilmember Kirby. Councilmember Krugel. Councilmember Slater. Councilmember Sullivan. And Mayor Hague.
Hi. Thank you. So tonight, we have a public hearing. Our public hearing is going to be seven alpha, public hearing for TIF 1-21. Common Bond, La Sura Meadows, 1 and 2. Administrator Krugel.
Yes, sir. Mayor Hague, members of city council. Procedurally, what we will do is Community Development Director DiMaggio, and I believe Shannon Sweeney from David Drown and Associates is present to go through a presentation on the TIF, the proposed TIF. At that time, we will then ask city council to open the public hearing, see if there's any public comments that would be recorded and registered with the public hearing for this TIF, and then close the public hearing. And then if there's any discussion amongst city council after the presentation and comments by city or by residents or individuals, we can then answer questions as staff. So I'll turn this over to Community Development Director DiMaggio, and she can go through the, the presentation for this item.
Good evening, Director DiMaggio. How are you this evening?
Good evening, Mayor Hague, members of the council. As always, thank you for having me, Shannon. I'm gonna start off. If you would like to add anything, please feel free to do so. Common Bond Communities has requested the establishment of a TIF district. This would be a 26-year housing district. They are looking for funds to rehab La Sura Meadows 1, which are the existing apartments that are there. And they're looking for funds to help with the construction of La Sura Meadows 2. This is a 95% pay-as-you-go TIF district. It means that 95 will go to the developer for their costs. That amount would not exceed $740,843. So the amount annually for the next 26 years or when the project is completed is the full amount would be 26, or excuse me, $28,806. The remaining 5% will go to the city of La Sura for any administrative costs that we have associated with running the tax increment financing district. On the map, I have, or up on the screen, you can see a map of the existing buildings. That is the, in the area of the orange boxes is La Sura Meadows 1. The new greenfield space would be considered La Sura Meadows 2. So the existing apartments are in the orange box. Those are the ones that they are going to rehab. The rehab costs are actually well over the amount of the TIF. I believe they came in close to $2 million, but the TIF did not generate that much. So this is the maximum amount that they can get for rehab. They're looking at new decks, new windows, new air conditioning units, you know, just overhaul of the existing apartments. So unfortunately, we're not going to have enough of the TIF to help them, but we're trying to find some funds to help them with some of the rehab costs. As I said, this is a pay-as-you-go TIF. So the developer, not the city, will finance the cost of the improvement. So the developer will make the improvements. After they pay their taxes, the city of La Sura will take the funds and give the qualified expenditures, the funding for that back to the developer. The payments are contingent on the availability of TIF. So if the taxes come in lower than we estimate, then their amount will be reduced. The city is not on the hook if that happens. The developer, not the city, carries the risk of the TIF. They need to make sure that they have enough funds to pay for anything that they spend. And so unfortunately, though, so failure by the city to make the payments because the TIF does not constitute a default. So basically, we're hoping to have enough money to help them pay for the TIF. But if for some reason they have to come up with more money that's on their end, that doesn't default the entire TIF, it just says, this is all we could give you. Shannon, does that sound about right? Is there anything you want to add to any of that?
No, I, it's a defined commitment. They have to pay their property taxes before anything's reimbursed. Only a portion of the property tax revenue gets reimbursed based on the incremental increase in property taxes. There's no action requested of the council this evening. We're still in the process of assembling final terms for the development agreement, but Samantha summarized them very well.
So tonight, we're asking for you to hold the public hearing, any, you know, hear any comments that there are from the public. Once the final agreements are done, we'll bring them back to you for approval. This is just hearing the comments. I don't believe that the TIF plan will change. The numbers are what they are. What we're negotiating right now is the development contract. And hopefully that will be done. Our bond council, Mary Ipple, is actually negotiating that contract on our behalf. And as I said, hopefully that will be done soon. Oh, thank you. I forgot I did this screen. I wanted to explain something because I wanted to show you some of the tips that we have. La Sura Meadows actually has an existing TIF, TIF 14 is La Sura Meadows. What they would do is if we do approve TIF 21, they'll decertify TIF 14. TIF 14 had a higher amount. You can see it was for up to $700,000, but they never ended up doing phase two. So basically, this new TIF would help rehab the existing apartments plus do phase two. It'd be approximately $740,000. And then one more screen, please, Jasper. And as Shannon said, the request tonight is just to hold the public hearing, take any comments from the public on the proposed tax increment financing plan, and we'll come back to you at a future meeting with the formal documents for approval.
Thank you, Director DiMaggio. Members of councils, anybody have any questions for Director DiMaggio or Mr. Sweeney before we go ahead and take the vote to open public hearing?
Mayor Hague, this is Sean Kirby. I got a quick question for Samantha. Samantha, how much longer is left on that first tip that La Sura Meadows has? Or does it somehow roll into this second tip?
That's an excellent question. It was supposed to go until 2022. So decertify a couple of years early. And so tonight, just by holding the public hearing, you're not authorizing the TIF. We're just taking any public comments. They still need to come back and you would need to formally authorize the TIF through the approval of the agreements. But there is still a few years left on the TIF and they would decertify early. And they're hoping to have this new TIF then to fix up the apartments and to build phase two.
That answer your question, Councilmember Kirby? Okay, anybody else have any other questions? During night, I'll entertain a motion and to open the public hearing for TIF 1-21, Common Bond, La Sura Meadows 1 and 2.
Favola, so move.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Any final questions or discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you'd go ahead and do the roll call vote for opening the public hearing for TIF 1-21, Common Bond, La Sura Meadows 1 and 2.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas. Councilmember Huntington. Councilmember Kirby. Councilmember Krugel. Councilmember Slater. Councilmember Sullivan. And Mayor Hague.
Hi. Our public hearing is now open. Do we have anybody that wishes to address city council regarding the TIF for Common Bond, La Sura Meadows 1 and 2? Administrator Krugel, if you'd let us kind of know if we have any hands raised?
Yes, sir. I will let you know at this moment, we don't have any, anybody listening. If you would like to comment on the, the TIF, now would be the time to do so. I did not receive any pre-arranged comments or written comments as we do sometimes with these situations, especially when we hold these meetings virtually. So if anybody does have any interest in commenting right now, please, please raise your hand and I can unmute you and, and we can record that for the record. So Mayor Hague, I, I'm not seeing anybody raising their hands. We have six people in attendance right now, virtually. I would say it would be fair to, you know, give it another 15, 20 seconds and then we could entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Will do. Administrator Krugel, wait for your cue.
All right, Mayor Hague, it's waited about 15 seconds. Still, I'm not seeing any, anybody raising their hand for public comment. I, I would say you could entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Will do. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for TIF 1-21, Common Bond, La Sura Meadows 1 and 2.
Favola, so move.
Thank you, Councilmember Favelas. Okay, any final discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Krugel, if you'd go ahead and do the roll call to close the public hearing for TIF 1-21, Common Bond, La Sura Meadows 1 and 2.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas. Councilmember Huntington. Councilmember Kirby. Councilmember Krugel. Councilmember Slater. Councilmember Sullivan. And Mayor Hague.
Hi. Thank you, Administrator Krugel. We now move on to our regular agenda for this evening. The first time out of docket is eight alpha, the CASA 22 Improvement Project Assessment Role Adoption Resolution. Administrator Krugel.
Mayor Hague, members of city council, before you tonight is a resolution. And there is a change in one of the proposed assessments for the assessment role compared to what is in the packet. And I will be requesting that, that included in the, the resolution or in the motion to approve the resolution tonight. As a general idea, the map on the display right now shows the project for the CASA 22 Improvement Project. You can see the north portion of Commerce Street or what was formerly Trunk Highway 112, now CASA 22. That is a reclamation type project. And then also you have the red area on here that is the reconstruct and the orange area, which is the Mill and Overlay section. So very large project for this community, probably won't ever see a, a project much larger than this in the future. Overall, we, we held a public hearing on September 14th. Now with the COVID-19 pandemic and the fact that we're holding these meetings virtually, we kind of didn't do what, what I would call is the traditional method of holding the public hearing and adopting the assessment role on the same night. What was determined to be done was the appeal process officially closed at 9:00 PM on September 14th, 2020. So that actually closed while that meeting was in session. There, there were six appeals that, that we did receive. So if those individuals choose to perfect their appeal, they can, they can do so because those have been recorded. There are three proposed changes. I'll go a little bit into detail into these based on what the original proposed assessment role was. There was a, there's a low property owned by Ed Low. The proposed assessment for that property was $15,500. The property owner reached out almost immediately after receiving the letter, which is what we would like to do is we can have a conversation with that property owner and, and see what, what questions they have about their, their assessment. And it turns out that those, those questions that, that Mr. Low had, we brought the appraiser in there and the appraiser looked at it a little bit differently based on the actual land use of the, of the property. And what's being proposed there is an adjustment from $15,500 to $10,788. That is recommended by the appraiser and supported by staff. Another property, we'll call it the second property, is a low property located on the, the project. This is actually concerning two parcels. The, the idea behind this one is that if that, if Mr. Low or the Low family would like to combine their two parcels, then split them, there's a possibility that you could have an additional lot available for a single-family home. What the agreement that we've made with, with the Low property owners is that if they choose to do so, which they've indicated they don't intend to, and they intend to continue to live on the property as is, but if they would choose to sell, combine the lots, then split them, within 15 years, they would have to pay that $4,500 difference with, with the assessment. So their assessment was proposed at $12,000 and it was adjusted or proposed to be adjusted to $7,500, which is what the standard single-family home lot is. The third property is the Bound Cemetery Association, which owns roughly 1,408 feet of frontage along CASA 22, kind of in that South Elmwood area. We've done some things internally, talking with this group. And the negotiated amount for this assessment comes out to be $22,000. That's what's being proposed and based on legal counsel recommendations, staff recommendations. That's what we would like to see included in the adopted assessment role tonight. Staff feels that's fair. There's, you know, the, the property itself is a cemetery. And there were some considerations made there. And so tonight, the action that's requested is staff adopt or consider adopting Resolution R 2020-025. dash zero two five, adoption of the CASA 22 Improvement Project Assessment Role. And have that include in the assessment role, the adjustments of the low property, adjusting that to $10,788. The low property adjusting that to $7,500 and the mound cemetery assessment being adjusted to $22,000. With that, I'll entertain any council or any questions from City Council. And I'll stand for questions.
Mayor Hague, members of all.
Any questions for our city administrator?
Mayor Hague, member Sullivan.
Councilmember Sullivan, please.
Jasper, can you just clarify where, when you talk, when you say these numbers were negotiated or reappraised? What what was the general feeling from the owners of those three properties?
Yes, so with the the low property, Ed Low, he officially filed an appeal and then after negotiations and and the adjustment, he withdrew his appeal. The low property, there's a specific agreement that was drafted by legal counsel and the city engineer that will be signed, that will, that will generally state what what I stated tonight. And the same goes for the the mound cemetery negotiated amount of $22,000. That will be a an agreement of which the mound cemetery association agrees to the assessment and waives any right to any future appeals. So the the idea behind these is that there's some basis and some protection for the city that we don't make these changes. And then all of a sudden, we are, we're, we end up in court again. So so every single one of them, there, there, there really is no right to appeal after this is adopted.
Right. But I mean, they, at this point, they're feel this is a fair number on their end as well. Or are any of them online tonight?
I can answer for them. All of them feel that it's a fair number. They all, they all are agreeable to what's being proposed.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't believe any of them are, let me just check quickly. I don't believe, no, none of them are online right now, but but all of them we have been talking to and they are agreeable to to these amendments.
Thank you.
That answers your question, Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes, thanks, Jasper.
Anybody else have any questions for our administrator?
Councilmember Slater?
We have Councilmember Slater.
Which ones do we have signatures on already? Do we need signatures on all three of them?
I can answer that, Councilmember Slater. So the low property, we have documentation of the appeal and we have documentation of the withdrawal of the appeal. That satisfies the that requirement. There, there's no longer an appeal window for that property. The low property has been signed already by the property owner. And the mound cemetery, there's been email confirmation since the chair is out of town right now. So that they will be signing this when they return to town tomorrow for this amount. So there's, there's written confirmation for all three. The mound cemetery one, it's, it's, I guess, more so in limbo than all the rest, since it's not officially signed yet, but there is a an email confirmation that they will be signing based on the terms.
That answer your question, Councilmember Slater?
Yes. Mayor Hague.
Go ahead, Councilmember Sullivan.
Just to piggyback on what Councilmember Slater just said, so if they were not to sign it tomorrow, what would happen?
I would say this is, this is Administrator Krugel. I would say that we would then have to bring this back at a future council meeting. We have the right to amend these assessment roles after the adoption of it. So we would, we would have to reevaluate it at that time. So the the general understanding is that they will come in and and sign the agreement as soon as they return to town and and then we'll, we'll move on. If that doesn't occur, you'll see this on on a future agenda item. Likely the first meeting in October.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for our administrator? During that, I'll entertain a motion then for City Council to consider resolution Romeo 2020 dash zero two five, adoption of the CASA 22 Improvement Project Assessment Role, including the three adjustments. The low property from $15,500 to $10,788. The low property from $12,000 to $7,500. And the mound cemetery association from $65,250 to $22,000.
So moved, Huntington.
Thank you, Councilmember Huntington.
Mr. Mayor, this is. Go ahead, please.
Councilmember Favelis, if you're trying to address?
I was seconding.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Krogman, I believe you have something, sir?
Yeah, I remember the city administrator indicating there were a number of people that may want to address the council on this issue. I'm not sure what the procedure is, but we certainly shouldn't be voting if we're going to hear from people. I'm just curious where we are.
Yes, Councilmember Krogman. I I I'm, we we invited people. They could speak during this, but I don't believe there is anybody on the call right now that would like to speak, but the mayor can definitely ask the the individuals here if they would like to speak, but I I do not believe there are any comments.
I might have misunderstood, but I want to be sure we're, we're following the correct procedure. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Is there anybody that would wish to address City Council regarding our proposed action for tonight? Approving the CASA 22 Improvement Project Assessment Role Adoption.
Mayor Hague, I'm not seeing anybody indicating any intent to participate in public comment on this item by raising their hand.
Okay, thank you, Administrator Krugel. Well, we have a motion from Councilmember Huntington, seconded by Councilmember Favelis. Any final discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do the roll call vote for the CASA improvement pro, CASA 22 Improvement Project Assessment Role Adoption with the recommended changes.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelis?
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby?
Aye.
Councilmember Krogman? Councilmember Slater?
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Aye.
And Mayor Hague?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final, final item on the docket tonight is eight Bravo, the final kinetic leasing capital lease item approval, Administrator Krugel.
Yes, sir. Mayor Hague, members of City Council, before you is a capital lease item approval with kinetic leasing. This is for the installation and training of public work, public services staff for the asset management software that is being used by staff. This is the last of the items that were included in the in the kinetic lease capital program. So this is the final payment to Core and Main for that asset management software training. As you may, may be aware, we we had a, what we thought was the final payment, I believe, a couple of meetings ago. There was an invoice that was hanging out there that was sent to the wrong email address. So that's what this is for. So this is what we believe to be the final, final kinetic leasing payment request for the the meter project. So what we're looking for tonight is a motion to approve the execution of the payment request form to kinetic leasing. I will entertain any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for our administrator regarding the kinetic leasing for Core and Main for $9,000? During that, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the execution of the payment request form attached to this agenda item. So the funds will be dispersed to the vendor from kinetic leasing, Core and Main LP for a total of $9,000.
Sullivan, so moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan.
Krogman, second.
Thank you, Councilmember Krogman. Any discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do the roll call vote for the execution of the payment request form attached to this agenda item for the funds to be dispersed to the vendor from kinetic leasing incorporated to Core and Main LP for $9,000.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelis?
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby?
Aye.
Councilmember Krogman?
Aye.
Councilmember Slater?
Aye.
And Councilmember Sullivan?
Aye.
And Mayor Hague?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Well, everyone, we've made it through our regular agenda tonight. We're now at our comments, reports, and items of appreciation. With that said, we'll start off with Councilmember Krogman, sir.
I do not have any comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Slater?
I also have nothing tonight.
Okay, Councilmember Sullivan?
Um, the only thing I have tonight is we had a EDA meeting just prior to this one tonight, and we spent a lot of time talking about housing. Going all the way back to the comp plan and the housing plans that we, housing studies that we've done. We're going to be calling a special meeting, not sure on a date or a time yet, but it sounds like maybe in two weeks to hopefully come up with a plan on how we want to move forward.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Kirby?
Real quick, on September twenty second, I had two commission meetings. One was with the hospital board, three o'clock. COVID testing continues to go up 200 a day at each campus. That would be Waconia, Arlington, and Lusur. And then I had a community ed meeting at 6:30 and I guess the biggest topics there was a $50,000 state grant for the adult education. And then a couple of quick announcements, our senior expo, October fifteenth, from nine to 11 AM, and that'll be at the high school outside in the parking lot because of COVID. Hopefully, the weather will be nice. And lastly, fall harvest for the kids, October twenty ninth. I believe that's Park Elementary and will be outside, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Kirby. Councilmember Favelis?
Oh, I was asked to give a thank you to the city of Lusur for the Lions Club, for the use of the the American Legion Park Parking Lot for Saturday, for Sunday. And and it was a successful event. Thank you to to staff for helping us with that and thank you for for all the citizens that came. We were actually able to make some money to be able to put back into the community off of this event. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Favelis. Councilmember Huntington?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I know I've been gone for a couple, seems like forever, and I'm glad to be back. I just want to say thank you to all of my city staff and the city council people for the nice thoughts and prayers, and also to the community of Lusur, who I received lots of letters and a lot of cards during my recuperation from heart surgery. And just want to say thank you to the community and everybody in the city staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. And again, on behalf of all of us on City Council, we're very grateful to have you back. And we continue to wish you well with your recovery process and good luck. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Kachera, I see that you're joining us tonight. Anything, sir? I'm sorry, Director Kachera.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. No, nothing tonight.
Okay, our Director DiMaggio, are you still on with us?
I think Director DiMaggio has stepped off.
Okay. And Engineer Bangfang, anything, sir?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And again, thank you for everything you've been doing regarding a CASA 22 project. It looks great. And before I pass it on over to our administrator for his typical hammer position, I just want to say a couple of things. We have some roads that are still closed in the city of Lusur, that being bridge, as well as some of the access on the CASA 22 Elmwood Project. Please, if you don't have any business being in those areas to get to your homes or businesses, these are not thoroughfares. They have not been officially opened. Right now, we're there in what we call soft close. We anticipate on opening that towards the end of this week. And please be mindful of the signs. Okay, and other than that, speeding continues to be a problem in the city of Lusur. We want to make sure that we monitor our speeds. I know that the speed trailer is going to be going up again. And we certainly wouldn't want to get anybody stuck having to pay a ticket. So here's your fair warning, watch your speed. With that said, I'll turn it on over to our administrator, Administrator Krugel. What's your, what's your final thoughts, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mayor Hague. I'll just comment a little bit on our budget process that we're going through right now. We're, we're having a bunch of personnel and budget committee meetings. The next one will be on October seventh. I want to just talk about a little bit about the abatement. We do talk about the abatement almost every meeting that we have related to the budget and every meeting that we've talked about with City Council. So I I'm going to reach out. I know Mr. Roberts had some comments tonight. Reach out directly, maybe the mayor and myself or whoever else is interested with obviously open meeting law considerations. Reach out, talk to Mr. Roberts about about the situation and and kind of describe what's going on. I think there's been a lot of information put out about the the abatement issue that we've identified. But I think we're doing the right thing by addressing it head on and and trying to come to a a solution. So if anybody's interested in participating in the budget process, I would recommend participating in those many touch points that we have throughout the year. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. And with that said, I want to turn a motion for adjournment.
So moved, Huntington.
Thank you, Councilmember Huntington.
Sullivan, second.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great evening, everybody, and thank you for all your continued hard work. And thanks again to our staff for implementing the things that we do here at City Council. It's very noticeable. The city's looking great and it's all because of the hard work that we're all doing collectively. So thank you. Have a great evening.